All right, let's go ahead and get started. We we we're hoping that is recording. It might be recorded. It is catching my voice and hopefully everybody else can yell really loud so we can catch you. So let's go ahead and get started. I like to call to order Thursday, July 17th, 2025, our town council meeting as always, we always open with the pledge of allegiance. And I'd like to start off tonight, we're going to let Nicholas leave the way in the pledge of allegiance. So just don't tell you what to do.
The pledge of allegiance to the United States of America to put hands on the nation under God in a visible, with liberty, justice, and all.
Thank you, Nick. Sorry, I had to do it. All right, let's move on to be motion to approve the agenda as submitted. Can I have a motion? We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Yeah, we'll let Paul do all the seconds tonight. So we have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Let's move right down to minutes of the past meeting. Motion to approve the minutes from the June 5th, 2025 town council meeting as submitted. Can I have a motion? So moved. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion. We have a second. I know, I know. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. So moved. All right, our first scheduled appointment is a presentation from Carl Hogan with the town in North Beach FY24 financials. This is for information purposes.
Thanks for putting me on first. So what I thought I'd do tonight is I just took a couple pages from the audit report that I think are pertinent for this purpose. Um, there's a full, I guess it's like 40 pages long of audit report. I'm sure everybody's read, but I'm going to go kind of over the highlights of the audit for June 30th, 2024. We've been finished for a couple of months now, but just the timing in terms of the presentation didn't work out till now. So the first three pages of the audit report are your independent auditor's report, and we want to focus on that top and paragraph there being the opinion paragraph basically stating that the numbers that were presented by management for audit were fairly presented for the year ended June 30th, 2024. The rest of the audit report is a boilerplate audit report, which we want to, which is what you want. You don't want any kind of modifications to the audit report, which indicate that, you know, something was inappropriate, etc. So we have a boilerplate on on modified audit report. On the second page of the audit report, I just want to point out here at the bottom, required supplementary information. We're going to go over a piece of this. This is a piece of the audit that we don't give an opinion on, but I think it's some of the most important information in the audit report. The first being the management's discussion and analysis, which is on pages four through 11. So this is prepared by management. And if you're not going to read all 40 pages of the audit report, I encourage everybody to read pages four and 11, which I think Linda's got some questions on already from the town council relating to those management's discussion and analysis. And I think it gives, if you're not a advanced user of the financial statements, it kind of puts in layman's terms the results of operations for the year. Okay, so we'll skip over the third page of the audit report here. There's, this is just talking in our signature. But the next page I'm going to talk about is another piece of that required supplementary information. This is the budgetary comparison schedule for the general fund. So I'd like to, the reason why it's required supplementary information, we don't give an opinion on this because we're only auditing your actual numbers. We don't audit your budgeted numbers, but this is a very important schedule in terms of, it's kind of like a report card in terms of, hey, here's where our budget was at the beginning of the year and how, here's how we actually ended up. So as you could see, the left-hand column is the budget numbers, then you have your actual numbers in the middle column, and then a positive or negative variance in the last column. So as you can see here, your budgeted numbers, $3.5 million for revenues were budgeted, that came in at $3.9 million for a positive variance of almost $400,000. As you can see there, most of the positive variance is related to your local income taxes. They they came in better than, stronger than anticipated. Also, your earnings and investments came in better than anticipated by about $165,000. Real property taxes came in less than budget by 300,000. And it's not because you budgeted wrong for those property taxes. There's a rule in governmental accounting that if you don't receive them within 60 days after year end, they were received in September, you can't recognize them until the next year because they're not considered what they call available under governmental accounting standards. So you'll see that $300,000 as a positive variance in 2024, 2025. As we come down for your expenditures, they were, they were $400,000 better than anticipated on $3.6 million total budgeted for the year. So as you see, your net change of fund balance was a positive 700,000. Beginning of the year, your fund balance was $4.9 million in the general fund, final general fund balance, 5.7. Any questions, concerns?
Just everybody in the audience knows that if you go to our website, go to the northbeachmd.org, go to board docs, everything that we're talking about tonight and everything that we're reading that we get to read, you can also take a look at it. It's pretty, it's really simple. I promise you because I can do it. I know you can do it. Just click on it, find it. You can see everything that we're looking at. We want to make sure that you see where we are. Only thing I would say is I'm very proud of our town. If you look around the state of Maryland or even the state of Maryland, I get the pleasure of of networking with 157 municipalities. And there's a lot of municipalities right now struggling, really, really struggling. And I'm proud of our town. I'm proud of our residents and what we're doing, our staff, because we're not struggling like that. And it's not by accident. It's by purpose. We work hard to make sure. It is, it takes a village. It takes a team. And I believe we have the best team around. So I I appreciate the audit. I appreciate the input. Things like this can only make us better and stronger. So if you don't have any questions, obviously his information is honored. You can reach out to him on your own. But does anybody have any questions?
I just want to piggyback off that. I mean, I've been working with the town for a little while, and they've always been conservative in terms of what they do and financially, etc. So I think it kind of reflected here. And then like, there's other good information in the audit report, water, sewer, capital projects and stuff. So I do encourage everybody to go ahead and review the whole document.
All right. Let's move right into town administrator report and your attachment also on board docs. You'll, you get exactly what we have. Town administrator Linda.
Thank you, Mayor. I will be very brief tonight, given that it's 100 degrees in here. But a couple of things, just to talk, just to give you an update on, we are, we've been working this past year very, very, very hard in getting all of our SOPs updated and policies updated in place. And we're almost there. I think by this time, the next time we meet, we'll be at 100%. It's it's a critical process that we use for these so that somebody steps out, we're able to step in and fill gaps when people are out of the office. We had a partners meeting yesterday with Chesapeake Beach on the wastewater reclamation and treatment plant. We have had some very good discussion with them about an uptick in budgeting, and we're expecting to get their budget, hopefully much sooner this year for planning purposes than we had it last year. And we are picking a date for the tour, and I will be in touch with you probably next week. We're going to try and do that in August. We're just going to give them the two dates. We're going to, we're going to go over there. We, today, I just wanted to give you an update on the the safety painting and signage. Today, we finally got the purchase order in place for the curb painting. We anticipate that starting probably early August. I'm looking at Donnie, just make sure I'm telling the truth. August 4th, I believe, is going to be the the touch date. So we'll confirm that tomorrow, and then we'll begin our outreach. Yeah. The comprehensive plan update is on track. Rick Crump will probably touch on that with his staff report. We wrapped up all of our annual reviews for FY24, I'm sorry, FY25. Our website is currently in process to be updated. Hopefully by September 1, we'll be ready to roll. And then attached to my report is the current CIP update with our new status notes that was updated yesterday. I mentioned to you all yesterday that we've put new notes in there. We got everybody back from vacation. And then all the open RFPs and ITBs are also attached for contracts. And with that, I'm going to stop and answer any questions that you might have.
It's in there. It's in board docs. Please take a look at it. It's pretty in-depth, a lot of information. We have a lot of moving parts right now in our town. And as you know, we're in a busy season. So any question you have, if you can't answer tonight, please go online, shoot us an email. We communicate through phone call, email, or coming into a town hall. And that's the best way we find to make sure you get the factual information. So other than that, let's move on. Thank you so much. Public safety report in the back row. Deputy Gilmore.
Hello. All right. So for June's public safety report, things pretty much lined up as far as last year's call for service with pretty much everything. We we had a delightfully boring month. We like boring months on our side of things.
You got the report in in the board docs, but I do want to address one thing. You know, there was a incident on July 4th in front of Neptune's. We, whenever there's a police incident, the town of North Beach will not send out information. We will, we will relay what the sheriff comes up with, because if if most of us know that if we put it out, it's factual, and and we don't want to make a mistake. So we always rely on the sheriff department to get us information, and then we will blast out at that point. That situation was handled by the sheriff department. I think it resulted in at least one arrest, if not.
So it resulted in a search warrant that was at a residence in Antirreal County. Two of the individuals were arrested at that search warrant that day. They are currently being housed in our detention center. One individual was identified, was not at that residence, was charged with some misdemeanors, and he was already served his summons, his criminal summons for his charges.
Any other questions based off the report? I just have one really. Just seeing that there were seven accidents that happened in June. One of them was mine. So yes, it happened on the corner of Frederick and Second. We were stopped at Second. The the vehicle did not stop, did not turn, came out wide and smacked right into us.
Oh, boy.
No one was injured.
Good.
Our car took less than theirs. Yay. And the officer, the deputy who came, very professional, took care of it very well. It was over and done with like a half an hour tops. Wonderful. There. Whether their car left or not, I don't really care. But but everyone was safe and sound. I want to just thank, thank the, and I think his name is Hardest. I think it's, I can't remember. He's a new guy. He's only been here, he was told me he was only been here for two months. So he's brand new. And he did fantastic job. He may have put his name wrong. I'm looking at the police report, or I'm reading it wrong. Okay. So just wanted to say whoever it was, it's perfect.
Thank you for the feedback. We appreciate that.
I do want to add one thing. I always have communication with residents around town when I'm walking on the board, whatever. If you see something, if it's not 911, we all know the difference what a 911 is, 535-2800. If you see something, you're not sure about it, just call 535-2800. They'll they'll notify the deputy on call or that's working, and they can be there in a timely manner. If it's a 911, call 911. But most of the time, it's not, it's just something that a deputy needs to address. So please, we've had great success with handling things in our town because of 535-2800. So, and also having the deputies present all the time. So anything else? I see, real quick, I just want Councilman Hummel and Councilman Dotson's here. We broke the HVAC for Paul's last day, so. Thank you so much. No other question?
I I do have something. I just, you know, and I did send an email to you and Linda about this, but I understand the sheriff's department, you know, we want to put out the correct information, but we also need to think about public safety with something like a shooting, you know, and I think, you know, residents need to know somehow, you know, because he was at large, you know, he wasn't apprehended right away. So I think we just need to come up with some kind of plan and something serious of that nature, just for people that are, you know, in the town, walking around or in their homes. I mean, what if, there's a lot of what ifs. So, and I don't want to get into all that, but I think we do need to come up with something for notification for something like that.
So, and yes, we could.
Sheriff's Department has something, but not everybody is on that. And maybe if we list, hey, we had an incident, you know, you can get on the, because I know I used to be on some kind of texting thread where the sheriff's department would send something out like, hey, there is, you know, a chase on Route 4, or a bank robbery, or, you know, something to notify the residents, like more immediately.
Right. So that program, to my understanding, still exists. It used to be a Nixle. We actually have a sheriff's office app now that you can download that'll bring stuff up like that.
Because I think I had Nixle.
Yes.
And then all of a sudden, I didn't get information anymore. But my husband has something, and maybe it's the app. But was something put out on that app?
I honestly don't know. I was working that incident. So that would have been done in the background. And and I was, you know.
Figure out something, either get that on our website, or, you know, something where our.
And that, that would have to come from the sheriff's office PIO.
Right.
Who is Ms. Kristen Leach. There are.
I know Kristen.
Yeah, reasons and not reasons why things go out immediately or not immediately, same as you guys with, you know, incidents within the town or anything like that. So that, those questions are better geared toward her. But I I hear what you're saying, and information sharing is important. But, you know, there's a balance. And as she's our PIO, I would definitely talk to her about that to see if there's maybe any way to link the two. The app with updates, maybe to your website, or put a link on the website to get to our updates, something like that.
Right. Just, you know, it was, you never know who's out there. You never know who that person is, what their intentions are, you know, who's right in the vicinity of that incident that should know.
Sure.
Or even the homes there, if they were on foot.
Right.
So. All right. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. All right, let's go to zoning, planning and zoning code enforcement. Rick.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So outside of the staff report that I presented, comp plan is coming along. I anticipate to have a full rough draft to you by our next council session. And then after you guys get that, we will send it up for the 60-day review at the state and hopefully pass it in your November session to finalize.
What, um, I know we had a long conversation this week. When, what's the drop dead date now with the webs or the new zoning or the application stuff? I know you've been working hard with that company, so.
Yeah, I've got about a two or three weeks setback due to some other things that have taken place that I've tried to address. So I'm hoping to have at least part of that up and running by August 1st.
Sounds good. Any questions for Rick? All right. Thank you, Rick.
Yep, thank you.
Public Works. First question is air conditioning.
I'll be here 9:30 tomorrow morning. Y'all got to come back tomorrow. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I will also be brief, but please, please feel free to ask questions if you have any. I just want to give a quick update on the boardwalk. Progress is going very well out there, other than being 110 heat index every day, or whatever. They started really roughly after the July 4th holiday. And to this point, they finished today, the T-section of pier. So now we'll be getting on the 20-foot section. I expect that to go a lot quicker. I think two more weeks, we'll be looking pretty good out there. We do, in about a week or so, we'll probably close off the entrance to the fishing park. But for now, when you go out there, the T-section is done, so we're going to let people go down, walk around, and then walk out on the T-section and come back around. So that, we'll open the T-section up, even though we'll close the section between the the walkway that goes down to the fishing platform. But they're doing, like I said, they're doing pretty good. They're getting about 20 feet a day. That's removing and putting it back on 20 to 30 feet a day. And I think once they get in where the 20-feet-wide section will move a lot quicker. So everything's on pace to be finished. Like I said, you know, weather-wise, I wouldn't want to say two weeks, but I'd say a month, we'll be definitely done with the whole project. So.
Yeah, we, and we're out there every day looking. DVW is looking at stuff, talking to them. The minute we know what day we're going to be past the ramps, because the pier will be open until we get to the ramps on right and left. Once we get to that, we got to shut the pier down. So we will do outreach. Kevin Schmidt will will be blowing it up everywhere. Linda will be on it. We'll have, we'll do everything we can to educate anybody that's willing to look at a Facebook post, a text message, or an email, or a website. Give them a couple warnings that we are going to keep it open to the last minute. But once we get to those two off-ramps, there's no way possible that we can do that. Now, the good news is they're working Monday through Thursday. So to be open, as always, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. So there's still a lot of time for people to walk on the boardwalk. It's just for 10 hours a day, they just can't. And at night, it's back open. So I think we've done everything humanly possible to accommodate people to still use the pier. And the guys are doing a great job. You can talk to them. They can answer, you know, they are doing a good job in this heat and the rain. The heat is bad, but the rain is just as bad.
Right.
We've had one of the toughest Junes and Julys I think I can remember. So, other than that, any question for DPW?
I I was interested in the breakwater shoreline project. You said you had another meeting.
Yeah, we have another meeting on the 25th of this month, and we're going to do monthly progress meetings. They went out, they got all the field data that they needed. The next phase will be core drilling to see what kind of soils we have underneath. At that 25th meeting, I should have some results from that. And then hopefully, when they get about 70%, we'll bring you in something to look at for the council to look at and get some ideas to you with they, you know, judging the soul born, judging all the measurements they took. And we'll have an actual concept plan that you can look at. You know, y'all were, received the presentation, but they did the field data and the soulborns and everything. Then we're going to make sure they're going to put that into a plan, meet with, you know, we'll come in a work session probably, show the council, and then they'll proceed forward after the council's on board with that plan and the mayor. But we plan on having monthly, I wanted to have monthly progress meetings with them to keep it rolling, because we're going to try to get that thing as quick as we can. They're shooting for end of December, first of January completion deadline for the design phase. And then the permitting will probably be the longest phase. So once we get that, but they are our local government, you know, they're a government agency. I mean, so they'll, they can be very helpful, I think, with that permit process within the, because they also did two recent projects, Jefferson Patterson Park, and then from the Navy Rec Center. So they're familiar with the right people to talk to for the shoreline permit division.
They just did some shoreline work in Neal's Estates, too.
Yeah.
Did you hear about that?
I did hear about that, yes.
Is amazing, what the before and after. I don't think they did it. I think it was.
That might have been a private.
I I think it, I think it was. But that, it really made a huge difference there in that community. And that community would get pummeled. So, you know, but there's, there's this more of a breakwater design, like just riprap.
At Neal's Estates.
A little different.
Right.
Yeah.
And Kevin is on board. He's attending the meeting, so he's going to prepare a real nice thing, like a thread that we can put on X to follow the project. Once we get a little bit further along, and also to have a lot of information about the oyster, possible oyster reef part of it. So that'll be interesting for the residents to check out. I look forward to that, and I think that'll be a great project.
Rain around the state, you saw Laurel get, I mean, that, obviously Texas going on all that. We had a slight flooding on Fifth Street a week ago, a little bit more. One thing I will tell you, the pumps we're putting in, our next one we're putting in is on Seventh Street, that obviously still has to get started and all that. But the goal really is to, is get to get it dry fast. I mean, there's only so much you can prevent from the Chesapeake Bay. It's a very large body of water. What I will tell you, it did flood on Fifth Street, a little bit of Bay Avenue, and within, I mean, 10 minutes. So the systems that we're putting in place, it's working. It's definitely working.
Yeah.
I'm excited about Seventh Street coming up. I'm excited about the oyster reef or whatever they come up with. I think there's some good foot forward. So I appreciate you, DB.
Just to give you an example, I don't want to hold up. But we, when we get an inch, we got an inch and seven tenths of rain the other day. When we get a storm like that, we'd usually send 550,000 gallons of flow over to the Chesapeake Beach plant. But this month, we didn't go over 400,000. With a little bit of rain, we had that because the stormwater pumps weren't, they were running, doing their job and weren't allowing that water to enter the manholes and get into sewer system. So that not only helps the flooding, but it greatly reduces our flow going over to the plant for billing for the variable rates. So that, yeah, it's definitely about the flow. So that, that was pretty impressive. Right. And we went, that's 150,000 gallons left. So that was a pretty big deal.
I appreciate it. Any other questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Treasury report, all right.
Um, Joanne's not here this evening, so I'm going to try and do this report justice. But before you tonight, you have the the fund balances for the five major funds for the town. The the rainy day fund has 3.9 million dollar fund balance. The sewer rainy day is 1.2, water rainy day is 597,000. The encumbered, unspent leave that we budgeted for this year and last year and this year is 377. And then the capital, which is encumbered, included in that spreadsheet from my report, is at 2.8 million. And that will draw down as we continue to do the capital projects this year. The total funds available at 8.9 million dollars.
In in your, in your town administrative report that you can find, the CIP capital improvement projects are in there, so you can see the status of them. We're trying to get them almost real time. We're getting there. So you can see the status of each one. And we have a lot going. So please take a look. Any questions for Linda? All right, let's keep rocking waterfront. Phil.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I really don't have much to add to the report. I just kind of want to highlight a few things. As you know, June was pretty much unbearable at times with the heat index and all the rain. And then, but staff, they didn't miss a beat. So staff, I wanted to thank my staff for doing a good job in these conditions that we've had lately. But no, really, I just want to highlight the nature center. If you haven't been there already, I would highly advise you go. We received countless compliments from our guests. We've had a significant increase in visits and overall engagement from our residents. This past month, we had six programs with a total of 288 participants, and that, that's really good. It's about 40 participants per class. But really, I'd like to just take this opportunity, this didn't happen in the month of June, but I'd like to take this time to recognize one of the town attendants, Nick Tony. On July 10th, while sitting the South Beach Gate, Mr. Tony witnessed a young disabled boy who was strapped into a stroller, lying on his side in several inches of water along in the South Beach. Without hesitation, Nick ran from his post to assist the child immediately, riding the stroller, thus ending what could have been a very tragic situation. So I would just like to thank him for that.
Thank you. Don't mind. Don't want to go down there? You want to stand back behind him? Just stay back here. Just stay back here. Can you just face that way? Come on, Bill. Yeah, please.
I don't want to block anybody.
Thank you. Thank you, Nick. All right. Now we're going to move right into public comments. The town of North Beach welcomes public comments. Please limit your public comments to three minutes. Public comment also will be taken in the chat box during the Zoom meeting. If some reason you can't think of a comment or a question, but you leave here and you have one, email us, call town hall or come by town hall Monday through Friday. We would love to hear your voice. And if there's anything we could do better, we'd love to sit down and chat with you. So we are opening up public comments now.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Abigail Francisco. I live at 4110 Third Street, second floor. Today, first, I came to thank you all, especially I want to thank Linda Stens, Mary, Mr. Mayor. Ken then took the time after a year, been waiting for the answer. I got the answer, and I'm so glad to hear the news. I already knew a little bit early today. So I really appreciate it. And Paul, thank you for all the years. You know when I'm going with that. Thank you. Thanks so very much. I would like to make two comments. We had an incident on, I want to tell you just of that, was June 6, right on the, right from my, my door, I was witness, right on South Wind. Right on the, right from my, my door, I was witness right on South Wing parking lot. When arrest, not arrest, I'm sorry, two police officers stopped a car. The reason I came to my balcony is because unfortunately, that same day, I witnessed eyes in DC on 16th Street, arrested two person very badly. I was very shocked, especially by me being foreign also. So I went to my deck to observe because I saw the driver could not speak English. I was willing to help, I was looking at the situation. I want to compliment the two officers. One stayed 30 minutes and the other one stayed two hours. That was something, is a question, they needed to stay two hours. He stayed until someone was able to take them home because unfortunately, they was a little drunk. I appreciated the service, but I didn't see that in our report. But I want to compliment the two officers. But two hours, I feel bad that officer could be doing something else. I don't know if something else could have been done. That is the point. The other thing, Phil, the other day, I was able to sit in a bench right next door, the, the entrance for the. That's okay, I'm not in a rush.
Get that, you want to take it?
No, no, I didn't even know it was on, I'm so sorry. No, it was my son, and he doesn't need me.
Right on the welcome center door, right next to our center door, there is a bench. You know, I understand about the bench because all the benches were for the garden. That bench is dangerous, not appropriate. That weight, that bench don't hold the weight of three persons sitting there. That's not, it is like an inside house garden bench. I appreciate if you take a look because it is very.
I apologize, we're, we're.
Right next to the door, when you went, the bench, that is, you know it's a bench.
At the welcome center?
At the welcome center, right there, that bench is kind of little, little danger.
We'll definitely look at it.
Thank, I appreciate that. And my last thing is, it is just a question. If the water on the bay, it is not health, it is not good. And you put a sign that people needed to swim in their own risk. You know, I know we all have a free will, but if you know it is bad, we know our town could hurt someone. Did you need to stay open? Something to think about, because we are a good town. We should care for all. And, and that bothered me, and I know I lived here for 40 years, and that is the second year. Then in 40 years, I recall that to have water problem. Last year and this year, those two times. That's all, it is my concern with that. Thank you again, and thank you for having the meeting with me the other day. I really appreciate it. Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? All right.
Good evening, everyone. I had a question about the town safety, pretty much about the traffic on Chesapeake. And I was curious to know, has the committee investigated the speed of the traffic more specifically at Second and Chesapeake?
I'm sorry, your name and your.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. My name is Michelle McNair, and I live at 3800 Bedford in the San Francisco at the Bay community. But more specifically, like I was saying, at Second and Chesapeake, I noticed that the vehicles are driving above the 25 mile per hour limit there, and they're not yielding to pedestrian traffic. And also, when vehicles are parked on either side of the road, your view is blocked to oncoming traffic. So as a pedestrian, you have to walk out into the street to see what traffic is coming. And by that time, a vehicle is up on you, going beyond the 25 miles per hour. So I'm just curious, have the committee talked about that to maybe propose putting a four-way stop sign there?
We, we have met many times about it. We are starting a campaign to educate people how to enter crosswalks. We've done studies on it. We, that is a state road, so we cannot put four-way stop signs on that road. That is a state-owned road, it's not our road. But we are looking at, continues to look at ways. If you look at the library where we put the planners in, that is because of that line of sight. So we are working on it, trying to figure out the best way. We've had two different companies come in, two experts, and we're, we're not getting a whole lot of information. We're not getting a whole lot of input. So we're going to continue to explore and try to figure out what we can do. But we are hopefully soon in the next couple of months, starting that campaign on, on crosswalks and proper use of them and how, how you're supposed to cross them and so forth. And we're going to continue to work at it, and we'll take suggestions. If, if you want to give us a call, email us, come by Town Hall, we're open to suggestions.
Okay, and just on the line of suggestions, I know I've seen throughout Maryland, maybe where they have signs to warn oncoming traffic that this is a pedestrian crosswalk. I don't know if we could do something like that. Again, I know you said it's a county, I mean, yeah, county road.
Yeah, and we have tried, and we've had the ex, we've had the companies come out, we've walked it, zoning and DPW. And every intersection is different, and finding a location to put them, that cars aren't going to hit them, people aren't going to hit them, cars aren't going to hit them. We've just struggled with it because truly the town was developed not to have this many people on it. So now the roads are really busting at the seams, so it is a big concern of ours.
Yeah.
So we will, we're going to continue to work at it.
Okay, and just one other comment. I know that it gets, it gets really busy on First Fridays as well, and it's just constant traffic. I know, I feel a little unsafe crossing that road during any time of the day because of the speed. So I've come and encountered, you know, cars not stopping, and I'm, you know, kind of having to look at them like a deer with headlights, like you see me walking in the crosswalk, and they're constantly speeding across the road. So I just wanted to make that comment.
What you're telling us is a concern.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, thank you for coming. Like seeing new faces in the audience. Any other public comment, anything online? I see Marty's online, nothing? Let's keep rolling, or let's move right into ordinance and resolutions, which we don't have any. Let's move into Calvert Health Hospital lease that you've received. And we have two guests here out in the audience. So Linda, you can take over and whatever.
Jeremy Bradford is here, the CEO, President and CEO of Calvert Health, and Larissa Goganser, Senior Vice President of Operations, are with us tonight. Jeremy, I'm happy to go ahead and just do a quick brief, unless you want to do it? Okay. I have notes and everything. This lease is essentially the same lease that's been in place with some, some slight adjustments since 2001. Both the hospital and our legal counsel have looked at it, and we've agreed to the terms. It's for a 31, 3,150 square foot building. And it's used for outpatient and emergency medical services. It has a fiscal impact for FY '25 is $7,142. There's a 5% annual increase rider. This term of this lease goes through June 30th of 2030, and it includes three five-year renewal options. There's some provision for some shared cost between maintenance, the town, town roof, exterior, snow removal, et cetera. We've, we've kind of worked through all of that, and we're in all, all in agreement of how this thing is, is working out. So we're recommending that the council approve the lease. Jeremy, I don't know if I've left anything out, but that's where we are.
I, I would tell you, and again, I want you all to ask any questions, but I could tell you that is such a great asset. Even though they're busting at the seams down there, it sounds like, we still don't have residents that know about it. So, you know, we, we are working with the hospital to make sure our local, the residents know about the location. But more importantly, all the services they offer. And we, you've seen their bus up here more and more, and I'm calling it a bus, it might not be called that. So what would you like to highlight? Just highlight like one or two things, Jeremy.
Thank you, Mayor, and I just wanted to take the opportunity real quick to, to recognize Linda. Since Linda's been on board, she's been working intimately with me and the team in order to get this across the finish line. Because I can tell you that a major focus, one of our key strategies at Calvert Health is to increase the access to primary care. And this facility allows us to do that. And then speaking with Mayor Benton, we've made a commitment to continue to open that access. So we have recently brought on a third provider to help us in that clinic. So to Mayor Benton's point, as far as busting at the seams, we are, and we're growing, and we're continuing to increase access because people deserve it. Because we feel like if we're getting patients earlier on in the process, then they won't end up in our emergency department. We want them to be at the right level of care at the right time, and the preventive side is the most important, and that's what we're really focusing on. So I cannot thank the council enough for your consideration with this because it is the right thing for us to do as part of our strategic plan, as well as the initiatives that we're trying to do to work to improve the health and well-being of those we serve in our community. And last, I just wanted to say two other things. I wanted to recognize Larissa Goganser, as Linda pointed out, our Senior Vice President of Operations. We did a national search, and I had the great opportunity of interviewing Larissa. And I knew when we first met, she was the right person for the job. Not only does Larissa have an extensive background in construction management and operations, but also she's a nurse. And as we continue to enhance the quality of care that we're rendering at Calvert Health, Larissa is working hand in hand with our team to make sure that that happens. So I just wanted to acknowledge and welcome Larissa. She's not had the opportunity to meet the mayor or the council members, so I just wanted to take that opportunity to welcome her to the team.
Welcome.
The second thing I wanted to share with you all is last night, Larissa and I were able to accept award to over 1,200 of our employees, and we were recognized as the top 100 hospitals in the country. So we sat in a room.
Yep, thank you.
And I just wanted to acknowledge our employees, our physicians, our volunteers, and our board, and you all as a community for wrapping your arms around us and helping us continue to advance the work at our organization. And we couldn't do it without you. So I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge everybody because it takes a village. And we're doing great things at Calvert Health, and we could not be prouder to be working with you all on this lease. So thank you, Mayor.
Council, you all have any questions for Jeremy?
No, I just want to thank Jeremy for coming to visit me and my husband when he was in there. He came in, my husband felt so special, he's like, wow, wow, he came in and visited me. I was like, well, that's how they roll. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
So I see Councilman Hummel on air, can you hear us? Mickey? All right, so the lease was provided. It again, is a continuation, it's been improved and so forth. It's, we need a call vote, and I'm just asking for a motion to approve the lease as presented to the council.
Move to approve the lease?
Second, do we have any discussion?
Yeah, just want to make sure, so the key terms, everything is the same as it was before. The only thing that's really changed in is the 5% annually.
Perfect, all right, let's roll. Any other question? Call the question. All right, no further questions, call to vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 I didn't see Mickey's mouth move. There you go. All right, there you go.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, all council members.
All right, let's move into mayor and council reports. I'm gonna, I'm gonna say a couple of things, and I want, well, I'll tell you, let's start with the council. Mickey, would you like to say any words? I don't even know if we can hear him. If we can't hear him, can you?
Testing.
Wave.
Testing.
All right. All right, I'm going to go ahead and start down here with Mary, or Councilman?
I only just want to thank Paul for being a friend and being a dedicated council member and showing up and doing the work that we do. And, you know, I want to wish you all the best. So, and don't be a stranger, you can always come and come to a meeting, you know? I, I know you're going to miss it.
All right, well, hold on. So I'm going to stop what we're doing, I'm going to turn it over to Paul to start because I'm a little premature on this congratulations stuff. So I apologize. So Paul, let me turn it over to you so you can go ahead and do yours.
Sure.
It's my fault, nope, my fault. Hold your hand out when you make a mistake, it was my fault.
That's why I didn't say anything.
I know, I know, I know, you're right, all right, I'm wrong, all right.
So thank you, everyone, for coming out. First, Phil, I went down to Wet Ones Over Park over the weekend. That park has never looked better. It looks absolutely fantastic. So great job to you and your, your staff for, for just making that just a beautiful addition to the, to the town. With that, as you, you may. No, at this point, this will be.
I gripped the Band-Aid.
This will be my final council meeting. As of tomorrow, I will officially have sold my house, I will be moving out of town, which makes me ineligible to be a council member anymore, so I am formally resigning. This is not something that I was expecting to do. It kind of happened, an opportunity came up and just kind of took it. Not moving too far, they're only about 15 minutes outside of town, so definitely will still be here for dance and all the events and everything else that go on within North Beach. It's been an absolute honor and pleasure to, to be up here for about the last seven or eight years. I came on the council to fill a position for someone else who was leaving town, so it kind of like feels like it's coming full circle. Definitely recommend anyone who's thinking about it to really get involved in municipal government. I've really, really been impressed. And obviously, great things happen at the federal level, great things happen at the state level, but this is really where the rubber hits the road. Working with town staff, working with the council and the mayor, really to kind of address the needs of, of the town and of the, the people that live in town, really has just been an amazing adventure. I've enjoyed most of it, not all of it, but most of it. Really has been, been great. So definitely encourage anyone who might be interested to get involved in any aspect of the town, whether it's on the various boards, whether it's on the council, I'm sure you'll be very fulfilled in, in doing that. So thank you, everyone, for all of your support over the years, and I definitely will not be a stranger. I'll, I'll be around. If you have any questions or anything I can help with, please feel free to reach out.
All right, now? Councilman Thompson?
Well, what can I say, Paul? It's been great sitting here next to you for the past few years. And thank you for stepping up, volunteering, and thank you for putting your name on the ballot for reelection. I guess for your first election, so it's been great working with you. Not diss up here on the dais, but, you know, out there doing judging for the hound of the town and the costumes for the children and the other things. So going to miss you, man, and just thank you for, for all that you've done for the town. You know, not just as a council member, but, you know, all the computer work and the other things that you've done to, to have the town keep moving forward. And wish you and your family the best. I know we'll still see you around here, and if I'm not mistaken, we still need to get a photograph taken.
Well, we do, and then.
We still need to get a photograph, so you are going to have to come back.
Yes.
In a suit and tie, so we can stand up here and get our photo taken because we now have a Councilman Crane up here, so that means we need another photo to go right there, so. And thank you, everyone else, for coming out. Stay hydrated.
Out in here. It's been a pleasure working with you, and I think the sequence is, I think you replaced me. When I left, it'd been 2017, right? That's when I left. Was it me, was somebody, it was very close.
It was 2016.
Oh, you're okay. But it was just, it was that strange period of time, and somebody was coming up. But it has been a pleasure, and you've had the unfortunate thing of sitting next to me for the past several years. I always say, if you want, if you don't, say something nice, come sit next to me, you know?
It'll be, it's always been a great pleasure. You have been a very level-headed, all the decisions in which you, you've talked about, your, your reasoning has been wonderful. I'm glad that you have IP experience, IT experience, because, boy, it's been very helpful. And good luck to you and good luck to your family.
Yeah, so as the newest member of council, I think this is only my second meeting. I have had the pleasure of knowing Paul in various capacities. I was involved in environmental committee, I'd come to the meetings and never really got to know him, and still don't really know him all that well. But I, I got to thank you for your service to the town, helping me come on board a couple of months ago, getting me set up with the electronics and everything. And without that, I'd probably still be clueless because I don't know iPads and Apples from Adam. Anyway, so thank you for, for everything you've done for the town. The time we did spend at MML this year, I probably spent more time with you than, than most other people here because we were sitting next to each other in many of the sessions. And so I, I got to thank you for that, and so I. And so I, I wish you all the best, and I'm sure we'll see you around. And yeah, public service announcement. And Greg stole my thunder because I was gonna say, yeah, with the weather the way it is, stay hydrated, take care of yourself, watch out for your neighbors. Make sure everything is, you take care of your, of your neighbors.
Thank you so much. And Councilman Healy, or Councilwoman Healy, you've already spoken?
I said what I wanted to say, you know, but Paul.
Sorry about that.
You're, you're gonna do great things wherever you go. So, and, you know, I hope to see you around town. I'm sure I will, especially at the events. And, you know, everybody else, thank you for coming. Thank you for your public comments. Thank you, Michelle. Thank you, Abigail.
So I'll tell you a quick story. When, 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 right before COVID hit, Paul came to me and said, Mayor, you know, we really, really need to look at this thing in China. It's coming this way. I don't know if you remember this conversation. And I'm like, man, we ain't worried about that thing. It's not coming here. I go home that night, and I'm laying there going, you know, Paul's a lot smarter than me. Very next day, I said, dude, we got to get together. And we did. And we put a plan in place 30 days before it hit the United States. And really, that was Paul. It wasn't me. I tried to start off saying it was all me, but then everybody knows it wasn't me. It was Paul. But also, when it came to our IT, when I became mayor, we had a severe challenge with our IT. And we, we, I call it like the room of spaghetti. It looked like there's just stuff everywhere. And Paul says, all right, I'll take it. And he did. He, he got us up and running. We got the Comcast going and Microsoft going. We're more efficient. Things are happening under his guidance. So, you know, it was bittersweet, seeing, you know, what took place for you to leave. But you will be missed. You know, your family has been, I, I got to know your kids over the last, how many years? You know, it's funny. I don't know what they're gonna do when I'm no longer mayor. They call me, I don't know what they're gonna call me. But I want to thank you, though, for your hard work, your dedication. But also, what I get, what Paul brought to the table is when we can, we would talk, and I would be like hyper. If you know me, I'm a little hyper. And I would be going 100 miles per hour. And there's old Paul just sitting there just waiting for me to shut up. And then he steps right in and calms the whole situation down. I appreciate everything you've done. I've learned a lot from you. I know it's hard to believe, but I have learned a lot from you. And I'm sure we'll see you around town. If not, he has a brand new pool. So if anybody wants to go to Paul's house, not that I'm inviting everybody over there, but I'll give you the address. But thank you again. Thank you so much for coming and doing what you've done for the last eight years, going on eight years. So we have something for Paul. We're gonna do it in a minute. But I do want to recognize Councilman Hummel. He is our new DVP, District Vice President for the chapter, Southern Maryland chapter. So he's, he's gonna be involved in Annapolis a lot more this year than maybe he wanted to. But he's our DVP. And he can learn from Greg. Greg was a DVP a couple of times. And he could tell you what to do. And I'm back on the board as at large. And, and the benefit of that is for us is that we get to see and make sure that we can convey what's going on in Annapolis back to our residents and back to the council and back to our businesses. And I'm very proud to have Mickey on the board with me, or me on the board with him. I look forward to great things this year. Just, just hanging out with Mickey and really doing a lot for the town of North Beach. So other than that, I'm gonna thank you all for coming. And I am gonna go ahead and embarrass my wife in the back. And that's her back there that trying to duck, not see anybody. That's my son, Michael. And Ashlyn. Ashlyn's our rent-a-kid. I'm not sure how she's here. Just kidding. Good kid, good kid. They're here because they want me to take them out to dinner. That's what this is about. So I want to thank everybody for coming tonight. God bless you. And I apologize, but Donnie Bone will have our AC fixed tomorrow morning at 9:30.
Maybe buy some fans for future emergencies.
Maybe we should. Oh, we should stop it. All right. Oh, y'all want that? All right. Can I? Yeah, yeah, we're gonna, yeah, let's, do we need adjourned or just? Let's go. I'm gonna go ahead and, and I'm gonna do a motion adjourned so people can leave. Don't want to leave. We're gonna do a photo op up here, and we got a gift for Paul. I thank you again. So can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion second. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying. Thank you, everybody.